Good afternoon. The special meeting of the Berkeley City Council is called to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kesarwani is absent. Councilmember Davila is absent. Councilmember Bartlet.
Is present.
Harrison.
Here.
Han.
Present.
Wengraff.
Present.
Robinson.
Present.
Droste.
Here.
And Mayor Aragine.
Present. A quorum is present. Moving to public comment, limited to items on this agenda only, there is only one item, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, pending litigation in the case of People versus Leonard Felton Powell. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we will now convene in closed session. Okay, I want to report out the closed session. So, City Council met in closed session with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The pending litigation is one case, the People versus Leonard Felton Powell, Alameda County Superior Court Case Number RG15762567. And the council took no reportable action in this matter. So, is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting? Moved by Councilor Droste, seconded by Vice Mayor Wengraff. Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing no objection, we are adjourning the first special meeting. I'd like to call to order the second special meeting of the Berkeley City Council for Tuesday, May 7, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kesarwani.
Here.
Davila.
Present.
Bartlet.
Present.
Harrison.
Here.
Han.
Here.
Wengraff.
Present.
Robinson.
Present.
Droste.
Here.
Mayor Aragine.
Present. All members are present. Moving on to public comment, limited to items on this agenda only, we have one item. Item number one, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The matter is the write-out matter, claim number is 0360BC2018. Would anyone like to address that item? Okay, seeing no public comment, we will now convene in closed session and report out any action we take in closed session. Thank you. And then, ladies and gentlemen, given that we are now just going into our second, call to order the special meeting of the Berkeley City Council for Tuesday, May 7, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kesarwani, absent. Councilmember Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Absent.
Councilmember Harrison.
Here.
Han.
Present.
Wengraff.
Present.
Robinson.
Present.
Droste.
Here.
Mayor Aragine.
Present. A quorum is present. Before we proceed with our agenda, I'd like to make the following announcement. The City Council met in closed session and approved a settlement in the write-out matter, claim number 0360BC2018, in the amount of $237,000. So, that's the action the City Council just took in closed session tonight. So, at the request of the City Manager, we're going to move to item two, the presentation on bond disclosure training, and then we'll go to item one, the fiscal year 2020/21 proposed budget. And we'll take public comment on each of those items after the staff presentation. So, we'll now proceed to item two. This is a presentation, I believe it's a required presentation, for a bond disclosure training for Mayor and members of the City Council. And I'd like to turn it over to Henry Oyekami, the Director of Finance.
Good evening, Council. My name is Henry Oyekami, the Director of Finance, and beside me is Mr. Chris Lynch from Jones Hall Bond Counsel. Written debt policy and the SEC requires that we provide regular training of elected officials and staff that work on city debt issuance. Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Chris Lynch, and I work at Jones Hall, and we act as the city's bond counsel and disclosure counsel on financings when you issue bonds. This is the second time I've come to present training like this. I last came in March of 2017. I'll try to keep the presentation short, but there's some important facts here for you to understand. The key message will be, first, federal securities laws apply to the city when it issues bonds, but it also regulates other information that the city distributes that's likely to reach investors. Second, city staff and elected officials should take reasonable steps to ensure that the city complies with federal securities laws, and I'll describe what those steps will be. Third, city staff and elected officials risk personal liability if they don't comply with federal securities laws, so it's important to understand those laws and the risk of liability. And finally, the city has adopted written policies and procedures in 2017, and I believe if you follow those policies that you will comply with federal securities laws. Next slide. Yeah, next one. Thank you. Both of the laws that I'll describe today were adopted immediately following the Great Depression, which saw widespread fraudulent treatment of investors. The two laws are the 33 Act and the 34 Act, and there are two rules that have been promulgated by the Securities and Exchange Commission, the SEC, to apply to municipal issuances. Next slide. The Securities Act of 1933 was the first general federal securities law that regulated securities transactions, and it does two things. First, it requires registration of securities, but that does not apply to municipal securities. And the second, it prohibits fraud in securities transactions. And as you'd expect, municipal securities are not exempt from that rule. It's important for you to be aware that under the 33 Act, a city official can violate the 33 Act if it negligently ignores the fact that the city has failed to disclose material facts to investors. So, mere negligence in securities transactions can result in liability. The second law is the 34 Act, the Securities Exchange Act of 1934, and it regulates the transmission of information in securities transactions. Most importantly, the 34 Act regulates fraud. The SEC adopted a Rule 10B5, which requires communications to investors to include all material facts and not to misstate material facts. So, what's a material fact? A material fact is any fact that a reasonable investor would consider in making the decision to buy or sell your bonds. Now, under the 34 Act, a public official can be found liable for violation of the 34 Act if the official intentionally misleads investors or recklessly ignores the transmission of misleading facts to investors. To bring it close to home, in 1994, the SEC brought an enforcement action against the Board of Supervisors in Orange County because it had recklessly disregarded bad disclosure being sent out by staff. Next slide. In 1989, following a billion-dollar bond default by the Washington Public Power System, the SEC adopted a second rule, Rule 15C212. 15C212 requires an issuer of bonds to prepare a disclosure document when it issues bonds. That document's called an official statement, like the general obligation bond official statement shown on this slide. The document is prepared by the issuer's staff with the assistance of outside professionals such as my firm or the city's municipal advisor. It's approved by the legislative body, so it will come to the City Council for review and approval. And it must include all material facts, which in the case of bonds traditionally is the terms of the bonds, principal amount, terms, maturity date, and financial information and operating data that are reasonable to evaluate the bonds. Next slide. Before 1994, issuers of municipal bonds did not have to provide any information after it issued bonds, but in 1994, the SEC adopted an amendment to Rule 15C212 that requires continuing disclosure by municipal issuers. The amendments require an issuer to execute a continuing disclosure undertaking and agree to the following things. First, to provide annual updates of the financial information and operating data that were in the original official statement; to provide timely notice of certain significant events such as bond defaults, rating changes, draws on debt service reserve funds, bankruptcies; and to post those filings on a publicly available website. This slide shows the front page of the city's CAFER because the city has to disclose its audit on an annual basis by a certain deadline. If the city doesn't make continuing disclosure filings on a timely basis, it has to describe those failures in its next official statement for bonds. Next slide. So, I'd like to briefly describe two enforcement actions that the SEC has brought against California issuers, elected officials, and staff. In 1994, Orange County filed for bankruptcy. It had pursued an aggressive investment scheme by issuing notes and investing it in risky derivatives at above-market returns. The county Board of Supervisors approved official statements for those notes on its consent calendar, and those official statements did not disclose the risk of default or the risky investment scheme. In the wake of the bankruptcy filing, which never resulted in any bond defaults, the SEC pursued enforcement actions against the county, the Board of Supervisors, and two officials. And it issued a report to emphasize the responsibilities under the federal securities laws of local government officials. The report highlighted the following facts. The supervisors were aware of the county's precarious financial situation and the budgetary reliance on above-market returns generated by risky investments, and the supervisors failed to take actions appropriate under the circumstances to make sure that that disclosure was provided to investors. Then, the SEC provided guidance on what elected officials, such as the City Council, should do when it reviews an official statement. Officials need to make sure that the disclosure to investors includes all material facts of which you are aware. That doesn't necessarily mean reading the disclosure document word for word, but it does mean if you know of a material fact that could impact the city's ability to pay debt service on the bonds, you should talk to the city attorney, the finance director, outside disclosure counsel, to make sure that those facts are disclosed. In other words, the SEC expects members of the City Council to participate in the disclosure process to the extent necessary to make sure that facts you know of that could impact the ability to pay debt service is included in the disclosure. So, we're... Oh, I see. Oh, sorry. Anyway, we'll keep going. In 2006, San Diego brought an enforcement action against the city of San Diego. San Diego had issued $260 million of bonds in 2002 and 2003, but at that time, the city was grappling with severe budget shortfalls because it had underfunded its pension and OPEB. The SEC concluded that when San Diego issued those bonds, in an effort to downplay the severity of its pension situation to investors, it included fraudulent statements in its audited financial statements, rating agency presentations, and official statements. The SEC brought an enforcement action against five members of city staff, and it also brought an enforcement action against the city's outside auditors. In the complaint, the SEC alleged that the outside auditors did not have sufficient auditing proficiency and were not knowledgeable about San Diego. After completing the San Diego... Next slide. After completing the San Diego enforcement action, the SEC Director of Enforcement gave a speech on the lessons that the municipal bond market participants should have learned from the San Diego enforcement action. She listed five lessons. First, issuers should adopt written policies and procedures. In each of the SEC's enforcement actions, starting with San Diego, the SEC required the municipal issuer to adopt written policies and procedures. In 2017, this council approved written policies and procedures, and I'll briefly describe that in a minute. Second, issuers should provide appropriate training to their officials and employees that are involved in the bond disclosure process. So, that's the purpose of this presentation, to make sure you understand federal securities laws. Third, local agencies should focus in their disclosure on the big-picture issues that are facing the issuer. For example, when the SEC brought an enforcement action against San Diego, it noted that San Diego's official statement included a lot of facts. It was a couple hundred pages long, but it failed to describe the gorilla in the room, the fact that the city had underfunded its pension and OPEBs and regularly had to deal with that in their budget evaluations. Fourth, local agencies should disclose bad facts with good facts. It's very tempting to treat a disclosure document, particularly an initial official statement, as part of a bond issue as a marketing piece, but the SEC's been very clear that the official statement should describe the issuer in the big picture and its totality, warts and all. For many California issuers, pension and OPEBs are the big-picture issue that need to be described, but it could be litigation, it could be impending departure of a big employer or property taxpayer, it could be deferred infrastructure work, it could be a structural imbalance in your budget, it could be addressing climate change. Finally, the SEC thinks that local agencies should hire auditors and other professionals that are suited to the task they're asked to perform. In other words, hire competent help when you issue bonds. Okay, next slide. I promised to describe the risk that the SEC would penalize city staff and elected officials as part of an enforcement action under the 33 Act or the 34 Act. Based on its enforcement actions against municipal issuers, it appears the SEC will punish individuals that intentionally defraud investors, as you'd expect, and will also penalize employees and elected officials that recklessly disregard a failure to disclose all material facts. In Orange County, the SEC found that the two individuals that were responsible for the investment scheme, the treasurer and the assistant treasurer, had knowingly defrauded investors, and it gave them a jail sentence and a fine, even though the SEC concluded they had not personally benefited from the scheme. And as I mentioned, the SEC also imposed a cease and desist order against the Board of Supervisors for their reckless disregard of the county's disclosure shortcomings. In San Diego, the SEC filed securities law charges against five staff members, including the City Manager, the Assistant City Manager, and the Treasurer, and in 2010, announced $25,000 fines for two of the staff members and a $5,000 fine for a fourth. Now, Orange County and San Diego are only two examples of municipal enforcement actions by the SEC, and the SEC continues to bring enforcement actions against issuers and hold individual staff members and elected officials accountable. Next slide. Finally, these are the key features of your disclosure policies that I think you should understand. First, a disclosure working group is established, and that consists of the finance director and the accounting manager. That working group will be responsible for preparing all disclosure documents, specifically official statements for new bonds, working with the city's municipal advisor and disclosure counsel. When the bonds are issued, the disclosure working group will review the official statement to make sure it complies with federal securities law before it sends it to the City Council for review and approval. The staff report prepared for that transmission will summarize your responsibilities under federal securities law for an additional reminder. However, I want to point out that the information that is disseminated by the city and that is subject to federal securities laws is not limited to official statements, continued disclosure filings, or even audited financial statements. Federal securities laws also govern other information that is reasonably expected to reach investors and the investor marketplace. That could include press releases, and it could include the city's website. In 2013, the SEC brought an enforcement action against the city of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, because Harrisburg had failed to file its continuing disclosure filings on a regular basis, and the SEC concluded investors were reasonable to rely on misleading information on the city's website. So, now that you understand the SEC's expectation of the City Council and the potential consequences of ignoring those expectations, I'll just repeat my opening message. First, the city is subject to federal securities law, both as part of initial disclosure, continued disclosure, and any other information that is disseminated to investors. City staff and elected officials should take reasonable steps to make sure your disclosure includes material facts. So, for example, we'll be coming with an official statement for the tax and revenue anticipation notes later in the summer. If there's something you know that could impact the city's ability to pay the debt service on notes, make sure you reach out to staff or us to let us know. You risk personal liability if you don't comply with the laws, so it's important to do it. And finally, if you follow the process in the city's policies and procedures, including this kind of regular training, then you should be successful in avoiding liability. Thanks for your attention, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Let's take public comment on item two. This is the required bond disclosure training for mayor and council. Would anyone like to address this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, I just want to thank you very much, Chris, for this presentation and all the guidance you provided us, particularly as we work to develop Measure O and as we're working to implement Measure O, our new affordable housing bond. I had a few questions. First, the debt management disclosure policy, if a copy of that could be provided to the mayor and the council, just so we all have a copy of it and we can review as we are required to comply with it, we would greatly appreciate it.
It's on the city website.
But if you could send us the link.
I'll send you the link.
The city website is not the easiest website to navigate, I would say.
I will send you the finance.
Although we are working to fix it, and I want to acknowledge the work our IT department's doing.
I will send you the link for all the financials.
Okay, thank you very much. I know that we do, in the CAFER, do the reporting, but if we can just have a link to that policy, that would be very helpful. So, the slide on San Diego interested me because it talked about the obligations of city officials to disclose material information to investors, but material information was kind of broadly interpreted. It could include unfunded liabilities or anything that would affect the city's ability to be able to pay out the debt, correct?
That's right. So, a material fact is anything a reasonable investor would care about. So, if you've got severe pension and OPEB underfunding.
Yeah.
That causes budget problems and could affect the ability to pay debt service, then yeah, that would be material.
So, I'm curious about, since you are a bond advisor, maybe the Director of Finance can answer this question. What do we normally include in these disclosures with regard to material information that we need to disclose to investors? Certainly, I'm assuming we probably include information on our OPEB and unfunded employee benefit liability, pension liabilities.
Yes.
Are there any other circumstances or material information that we provide to investors?
We do. We provide any information that we think is relevant, even if we don't even think it's that relevant. We provide full disclosure anyway. Even just thinking about the garage, we provide everything.
Okay, so I'm assuming capital, unfunded capital needs.
Yes.
Okay.
Everything.
And I can tell you, as far as pension and OPEB, we start with the disclosure in your audit. We usually summarize more up-to-date actuarial evaluations and ask questions if there's anything else going on, whether you're planning to set aside a reserve or things like that. It gets a lot of attention.
Yeah. I know that in the audit that Bedouin Associates has done, that.
Yes.
The issue of unfunded liability is extremely important, not just to our bond rating, but just in our ability to issue or incur additional debt. So, I would imagine that that's an important fact that we have to disclose. I appreciate this. I think it's important that we're aware of our responsibilities and the consequences for not meeting those responsibilities. We have a legal and fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Berkeley, and I appreciate you providing this information to us this evening. Councilmember Davila.
Yes, thank you for the report. So, my question was similar. What's... Because you said that we're liable for not turning... Like, what kind of information would we know that you all don't know already?
Yeah. Well, the odds are, as an engaged council member, you do know the type of information that would affect your ability to pay debt service on bonds, and my reading of the enforcement actions is that it's pretty bad behavior that ends up resulting in enforcement action. It's usually intentional. I think the Board of Supervisors in Orange County was probably unusually reckless in the sense that the Treasurer and the Assistant Treasurer were without supervision engaging in a pretty aggressive investment scheme, and when the disclosure documents came to the Board of Supervisors, it was approved on the consent calendar, it was never even considered by the Board of Supervisors as an individual business matter. So, I think if you follow your policies, which are, when the city issues a bond, staff is engaged in preparing an official statement, it brings it to City Council for approval. We make sure that you actually receive a paper copy of that official statement. That's one of the things we do when bonds are issued. We will describe in the staff report the SEC's guidance to issuers that I summarized tonight. We'll give you two paragraphs that remind you of those responsibilities, and my expectation is that if you're aware of something that is likely to impact the city's ability to pay debt service on bonds, then you'll know that fact. It's not going to be a surprise to you, but if you have a question, if you're uncertain, you know, talk to Henry, talk to the city attorney, talk to us, and let us know of a gray item that you might be uncertain of whether it is material or not. That's what the SEC has in mind. You have to remember that the SEC is charged with protecting investors, and so it really treats you the same way it treats Google. It has high expectations that you're going to take appropriate care to describe the enterprise that is securing the payment of debt service on bonds. And as a member of the City Council, my expectation is you know most of those things, and you won't be surprised by them.
That's interesting you think that. But I know for a fact that on this dais that staff has omitted stuff from staff reports that should have been included. Some of us have said these things, so how are we going to know if that's the case?
As the Director of Finance, there's no way I would do a thing like that. I should have more integrity, and I should... I am going to be personally liable if this happens. I am also personally liable, so I have a fiduciary to the city to do the best thing I can do, which is have integrity in everything we produce. If we are going to go to the market, we disclose practically almost everything we can even think of, just to make sure we're covered. Everything. There's nothing, full disclosure. So, you have my word for that, and that's what I expect. That's what my job is, and that's what the City Manager and I always make sure we go through each one of them. Even if we are not too sure that we should provide them, we provide them anyway, and that's all we've been doing.
And so, also, you talked about policy and procedures, like for... What does that look like? For... Yeah.
Yeah, so it may help you for me to describe the process where official statements for bonds are prepared, and this is described in your policies and procedures. It's Henry and the accounting manager's job to put together a working group to prepare the official statement. That would include the city's municipal advisor, who's very engaged in the operations of the city. It would include our firm, who represents you as disclosure counsel. As part of our role, we will provide you a letter at the time we close the bonds telling you that in the course of our work preparing the official statement, nothing came to our attention that would lead us to believe that the official statement did not include material facts or misstated material facts. In addition, the bonds are sold to underwriters. Those underwriters are regulated by the federal securities law, and they have an obligation to hold a due diligence session and to engage in reasonable due diligence to ensure that when they sell the bonds to their customers, that they have done the appropriate level to make sure that it complies with federal securities laws. And the underwriters typically have a meeting with city staff and the entire financing team where we spend sometimes up to an hour going through a list of something like 50 questions that even though everybody's read the official statement and read the audit and has gone through the disclosure process, we do it yet again, one more time, to make sure that we've looked at all the potential issues, and Henry and other members of city staff are there to answer those questions. So, there's a lot of checks and balances in the process, and that process is what's described in your policies and procedures.
Okay, and then, can you just talk about the material facts a little bit more?
Sure. Material facts are a broad term, as the mayor suggested. The idea is that you think about what a reasonable investor would want to know about in making its decision to buy or sell the bonds. So, if you're an investor in a California city that's payable from the city's general fund, then you'd want to know what the revenue picture looks like. Do you have any tax measures that are sunsetting? Are there sales tax declines because of changes in the way retail market works? Are there costs? Are there pension and OPEB costs? Are there negotiations with unions that have produced higher employee costs? We look at all of those things that impact the health of the general fund that will make... provide revenues to pay debt service on bonds. Measure O is a general obligation bond, which is secured by ad valorem taxes levied on properties within the city. We spend less time talking about the city's general fund and more time talking about the assessed value of properties in the city, and are there risks to those assessed values? So, material facts are different depending on the type of security, but again, the financing team is engaged to think about what does a reasonable investor care about when it goes to the city of Berkeley to lend money? And those are the things that we try to include in the official statement. We start with the audit. We start with other information that's on the website. We ask a lot of questions, and like I said, there's other parties... And like I said, there's other parties, such as bond underwriters, that come in and ask the similar questions.
So, about the website, because it's a little convoluted and people can't find that, is that, could we get dinged for that?
Well, our suggestion to cities, and I don't remember if we've done this with the city of Berkeley, is that the city add a statement on its website saying, "Nothing on this website is intended to, is intended for the consumption of investors. This is for public information. If you want information about the city's bonds, please go to the," I described how the city's continued disclosure is posted on a publicly available website. We should push investors to that publicly available website and let them know that that's the only place they should go to get information about the city's bonds and its finances.
So, my next question, is there something that's on the homepage that tells people where to go to get that information? Henry?
Yes, we have a website where we have a finance section where it has all our financials. It has all the CAFER for the past 10 years. It has all the investment reports that we have, all the quarterly investment reports, including our debt policy. Everything is there. And we made that line that says, "This is just for information only, not for investors." So, we think we covered it on that.
But I don't know if you answered the question. Is that, because, is it on the homepage? Like, how would you find it from the homepage?
It is on, it's on my finance page.
Okay.
Finance, and it says financial report.
Okay.
And it says financial report on the finance page.
All right, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you very much. I was really fascinated when you mentioned climate change as a risk factor. Are you thinking about, for example, we have to reveal the potential impact of climate change on our capital infrastructure? If we were to do a bond, for example, at the waterfront, that we might want to talk about what likely sea level rise impacts would be? Is that the kind of thing you're thinking about?
Sure. So, I can imagine a city that has an extensive waterfront, where if projected sea level rise reaches a certain level, that there would be significant costs borne by that city. If those costs are borne from the general fund, and if they're expected to be borne during the life of a 30-year bond being issued in 2019, then you would think that that's the kind of information you would want to share with investors. I'm working on a wastewater plant financing right now on the peninsula, where it sits on the waterfront, and there's expected to be long-term sea level rise improvements. And there's a lot of time spent describing sea level rise studies, efforts being taken by the two public agencies to make improvements, to address those improvements, to address those risks, and the ways in which the new treatment plant was designed to protect it against the impacts of sea level rise. So, it's exactly right. You want to both describe the impacts it might have on the city's revenues. How will it address property tax revenues if there's going to be property damage? How will it affect sales tax if there's a big shopping center down there, things like that? But also, how will it affect expenses? And again, all of this relates to what your, what bond, type of bond you're selling and what the security is for those bonds. But from a general fund, I would think that would be very relevant.
Okay. And do you have language you could share with the city about the, especially on the revenue piece?
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, we've, there is both kind of standard boilerplate type of disclosure, and then much more particularized disclosure being developed. I would think if that's an issue for the city of Berkeley, when we come to deal with the tax and revenue anticipation note disclosure later in summer, that we would want to describe those.
Thank you very much. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Councilmember Han.
Thank you very much. In addition to receiving a link to the policy, which would be great, I'd be interested in just seeing some of our past disclosures, because I assume we've done them before. That will help me know what is going to come, when it comes. And again, I mean, we're, almost all of us are relatively new. So, for a lot of us, this is going to be the first time we're doing it. So, examples would be great to peruse. Since we haven't looked at the procedure, I don't know what it entails, but I would like to say that I hope that when this does come before us, it appears on two council agendas. I think that if it's something with this level of responsibility, having it appear on one agenda where that's the day we have to ask our questions and approve it, especially since it's first impression for most of us, I think it would be more prudent if we could receive it on one agenda, have a presentation, have the opportunity to ask questions, but not vote on it until the next time. And that would allow us to contact you if we had questions, contact finance, contact the city attorney's office, and then all of us could have full comfort. Agendas do come out, whatever, 10 days before the meetings, but they're packed. And, you know, I'm just not sure that all of us would have the opportunity to get the level of comfort that we should have in making a decision of this magnitude without giving us that two opportunities. So, that's just a suggestion. I have another question, which is, I mean, everything we do, we bring a very high level of responsibility to, and hopefully integrity, I think we do. But obviously, there's a few things that rise to even higher level. For example, in the Brown Act, there's lots of stuff that's bad to do, and then there's a few things that if you do them, you can go to jail. And obviously, that's a signal that those things, beyond your extremely high level of responsibility, these things are, you know, you have just an extremely high level. So, this is obviously one of them. Are there others we should know about? I feel like we need, these things need to be marked out for us. Again, especially as we're a fairly new council, the amount of material that comes at us that we all take very seriously is pretty overwhelming. And I think we need to have some kind of a mechanism for signaling to us, what are the things where our level of scrutiny and responsibility is even more elevated? I think that would be helpful, certainly to myself. So, last question is, thank you very much. You have your contact information on the last page here. My question is, should we have questions outside of this forum? City manager, madam city manager, would it be appropriate for us to go directly to Mr. Lynch? Or would it be more appropriate that we come to you first? And do we have the authority to go directly to him? And I'm not suggesting in any way that we would, that we have this situation in Berkeley, but what if we were worried about something internal? Does that mean that our external counsel is kind of for ours to go to? Just kind of trying to understand what the access is to our external counsel.
Yes, the request and access to the external counsel should go through my office, and we will coordinate any responses or any coordinated meetings that need to occur regarding your request.
May I give a little feedback to the suggestion to have the disclosure document at two council meetings? Often, the process for issuing bonds is time-sensitive. There could be, for example, the tax and revenue anticipation notes have a time where you're supposed to borrow within a fiscal year and repay it within the same fiscal year. Sometimes, you're worried about interest rates rising. There could be a scheduled Federal Reserve meeting where we anticipate bond interest rates going up, so there's an intent to move things on a certain schedule. I'm wondering if the process that is, that works within the goals of being efficient with the financing schedules, but gives you access to the document, as you've suggested, would be for finance to share early drafts, once we have prepared a draft of the disclosure document that we feel is in good shape, to distribute it to the council, knowing that it will come back for review and approval, and you'll get it 10 days before your council meeting with the chance to read the final draft. We could even prepare a black line against that initial draft. I'm just concerned, given the long lead times with this city council, that it might be a significant impediment to getting financings done efficiently if we have to come to two different council meetings for review of the official statement. So, I'm wondering if we can achieve your goal without coming to two council meetings?
Well, it's certainly possible. I mean, so first of all, if we're in a hurry, one deadline, another deadline, we just get it done two weeks earlier. That's never a bad thing, right? So, and the second is that I think if it's going to be just an email, it's not enough, because in the same sense that, you know, our packets can be thousands of pages long. If you, if we have a land use issue, sometimes the record is over 1,000 pages just for that issue. I think it would have to be more than just an email saying, "Hey, here's a draft of something. Look at it." So, there could be a way that there were internal meetings, perhaps staff could meet with us individually or in small groups to not violate the Brown Act. But I think that I wouldn't want to go from suggesting two meetings, which I do think should be achievable in many cases, down to, "Oh, you got an email. It's on you." So, something in between that was a little more intentional, that required us to get face-to-face, even if we didn't have any questions. I just think that for us, we do trust our staff. I certainly do, and their integrity, and I trust you. But you've just told us that we have to have an independent judgment. And for us to do that, we have to trust, but verify. And to verify, we have to fully understand it ourselves. And I'm just asking for a realistic opportunity to do that, based on what our lives really are like on the council.
Okay. Yeah, and I wasn't suggesting you don't get the document or a printed copy. I was just wondering if it had to go to two council meetings with the time delay built in.
It's a suggestion. I'm only one council member. My colleagues may not agree. It is a suggestion, but if there are other ways to build in that level of opportunity for us to actually, for staff to make sure we got the opportunity to focus on it, which oftentimes, I think a meeting helps, and that we have enough time to digest things and ask questions of more than one person, should we wish to. And that process just takes a little bit of time, in light of all the other things that we have on our plates. So, I think in the real world, if we really want to be very, very responsible, we need more time than just, you know, one, it's on one agenda, we put it on action, we have a presentation, and we have two, you know, five hours of other matters in front of us that night.
Adam, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're certainly glad to work with the council in giving you additional time to review documents, ask questions, and even if we need a further meeting to discuss that, we can do that. And thank you for asking.
Yeah, I think there are ways we can do that, either in the weekly city manager meetings, or as we've done on other items, getting a group of three people together for staff to present and be able to answer questions. That's probably the better approach, so there's additional time. So, it sounds like we can certainly implement that. Okay, thank you. Councilor Davila.
Yeah, thank you. I would suggest if you're going to lock us into three people, you should do it through the committee, Budget Finance Committee. But, yeah, so you talked about the climate change, and I was curious, is that in the disclosure now?
I'd have to look and see whether we've had that before in the city's disclosure. It's been a year at least, so I don't know the answer.
I don't think, I don't think we have that in our current disclosures.
I think we need to. If we don't, maybe, I mean, we're, sea level rise and all that. But so, then I was also curious if earthquakes have to be, because we're right here on the fault lines and all that, so.
So, there is always seismic disclosure in official statements.
And we have a fuel line going up the city, you know, Alston Way, so I'm just curious if all those things are factored into the disclosure currently?
Yes. The earthquake, what is?
The fuel line as well?
That doesn't sound familiar. If there's a risk of a fuel line and risk of explosion, then we should add that to your disclosure.
Yeah, because we're, it runs up Alston Way, so, from the freeway. Yeah, that was my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that's the reason why we provided a copy of this, so that we can review it and inform staff of any additional information that needs to be disclosed. And so, I think the idea of getting the disclosure documents earlier, and then having some time for us to review them and provide input to staff is a great suggestion. I appreciate Councilmember Han for suggesting that. So, seeing other councils that wish to speak on this item, I want to thank our bond counsel and finance director for this presentation. And with that, we will move on to the next item. And so, before we go to the city manager on item one, the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021 proposed budget, we received revised agenda material this evening. Ms. Berkeley, would you like us to accept this for consideration?
Yes, please.
So, I move to accept this revised agenda material for consideration this evening.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Wengraf. Let's call the roll on accepting the material for consideration. And everyone should have a copy of it.
Okay. Councilmember Kestrelwani. The, oh, absent.
She's absent.
Davila.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Wengraf.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Droste.
Yes.
And Mayor Arigui.
Yes. Okay, so the material's been accepted, it's before us. And on item two, the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021 proposed budget, which has been developed and is being recommended by the city manager, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Today, we will, we will be presenting the 2020 and 21, 2021 proposed biannual budget. There will be two other additional opportunities for council to weigh in. And clearly, we've had a number of work sessions and discussions with council, but I want to go through the process that we've undertaken this year. It's a little different than we have in the past. Clearly, on May 7, which is today, we're having our work session. But prior to that, we've held budget, a budget series of all of our departments presenting their budgets to the Budget and Finance Policy Committee. And we've also shared more information, more transparency around what our budgets look like, specifically for general fund. We've also given a presentation on our capital, our capital plan. So, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa to go through today's presentation. And we look forward to working with the council over the next series of meetings to land on a budget for our new fiscal year. Thank you. Teresa.
Thank you. I just want, this is one, I just want to clarify or state that in the supplemental agenda packet, that does not change any of the financial numbers. It just changes the summary sheet. So, there were some typos in there. And in the new revised agenda material that you just accepted, what happened, it's just a change in language, because several of the department sections indicates that funding recommendations, funding requests are being recommended by the city manager. The only funding requests that have actually been incorporated into the budget and that are being recommended by the city manager at this time is tied to the clerk's office. So, there's an allocation, $190,000 one-time allocation for the census, and there's a two-year allocation of $113,000 per year tied to support elections. Those are the only two, so I just want to clarify that.
Ms. Berkeley, I'm not going to open up questions from the council, but I just have one follow-up question to that. I believe the city manager will be presenting this Thursday to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Correct.
Additional recommendations for the finance committee to consider.
Yes.
And one of the things that I had suggested is that, that meeting is open to any member of the council, but if the council can get a copy of whatever report or presentation is made to the committee, so that we all can have that information as we are considering the budget, that would be very helpful. So, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. So, tonight, of course, we're here to discuss the proposed FY '20 and FY '21 biannual budget. I'm going to give you a general overview of our general funds, our revenue expenditures. I'll give you an overview of what we're doing or how we look with our, all of our funds on an all-funds basis. We'll talk a little bit about staffing. I'll give some reference to our unfunded liabilities. Briefly talk about our CIP, our Capital Improvement Program, the strategic plan, some of the funding requests. Again, as the mayor just mentioned, we will be going on Thursday to present the funding recommendations to the policy committee, and our next steps. So, the city receives work from a variety of stakeholders. The city's budget reflects those requests and priorities. As expected, or not surprisingly, our requests continue to outpace the available resources. We use the budget process to align our resources with the demand. In an effort to be more transparent and accountable to the public and to the public, council has established six policy committees, including the Budget and Finance Policy Committee. The Budget and Finance Policy Committee is an essential part of this budget process. May 1 and May 3, as the city manager mentioned, May 1st and May 3rd, as the city manager mentioned, departments presented their proposed budgets to the Budget and Finance Policy Committee. These PowerPoint presentations are available on the Budget and Finance Policy Committee website. There is a link to the policy committee on the left-hand side of the budget webpage.
Ms. Berkeley, I'm asking you to continue the presentation. Would you mind pulling down your mic so we can just pick up your sound?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
This is better? Okay. So, over the years, council has taken fiscal ash, action that strengthens the fiscal health and security of the city. There are not, there are 10 actual fiscal policies. The 10th one was adopted by council about a year ago, last fiscal year. So just pulling out item number two, building a prudent reserve, council has established a formal reserve policy. As of the end of fiscal year 18, that, the reserves were funded, this is the general fund reserves, were funded at 18.04%. There is a long-term goal of funding up to 30% within the next, or within 10 years. So we have about nine years left. That covers the stability and catastrophic reserves. Number three, projections of future, developing long-term strategies to reduce our unfunded liabilities. In March, we presented our projections of future liabilities report on March 19th. And that report helps to address, or at least identify, some of our unfunded liabilities long-term. And council, on May 14th, an item will be placed before you to establish the 115 Pension Trust Fund. Number five and number eight work together, and they're related in that the Capital Improvement Fund, any excess property transfer tax above the $12.5 million baseline is transferred to the Capital Improvement Fund to be used for one-time purposes. Number nine was established to help reduce our unfunded liabilities. We have pension funds tied to the police. The Safety Member Pension Fund is an old fund, and as funding needs are reduced, we transfer that money into the new Police Employee Retiree Health Plan. And again, number 10 is a new policy that was established last fiscal year that helps fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so helps fund affordable housing and our arts So now we'll briefly go over the general fund. I just want to start first with the trend, the historical trend of the general fund revenues. The blue are our projected revenues, and the orange are our adjusted revenues at year end. And that just gives you the historical trend over time. These revenues exclude Measure U1, and they also exclude excess property transfer tax. So in these revenues, in these revenue trends, or in these revenue numbers, excess property transfer tax is excluded. The next slide are our expenditures, general fund expenditures over time. The blue column is the adopted budget. The orange column is the adjusted budget. It incorporates the Amendment to the Appropriation Ordinance 1 and 2, which happens in November, and the other one is coming, actually, the last one is coming this May. So the orange column incorporates those changes, and those augmentations, I should say. And the gray column is the actual, where we actually landed at year end. And this is the proposed biannual budget for the general fund for fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. There's $3.3 million available in the general fund in '20, and $3.1 million available in 2021. Not included in the revenues are U1 or P. So the projected revenues for U1 in this two-year period, $5 million a year, and for Measure P, $6 million a year. And again, it's not included in these revenues, revenue projections. This is a detail of our various general fund revenue streams. We've pulled out cannabis recreation, as asked by council. The method of projecting general fund revenues varies depending on the revenue source. For example, secured property tax is initially based on the county's preliminary estimates of the increase in assessed values. It is later adjusted for the county's certification of the increase in assessed values. This is also true for Vehicle and Lou. The sales tax projection is based on the estimates provided by the city's sales tax consultant. The sales tax consultant maintains the city's sale tax database. The UUT, or Utility Users Tax, projection is based on analyzing the recent historical trends and communicating with PG&E about actual or projected rate increases, and data on charges in customer usage. The city staff, the city staff's revenue projections is estimated based on the most likely outcome, and adjustments are made regularly as actual numbers become available. Again, cannabis has been broken out. U1 is not included in this chart, neither is Measure P. Again, U1 is projected to bring in $5 million a year. Measure P is projected to be, bring in $6 million a year, and again, is not included in these revenues. Also, the property transfer tax is budgeted at baseline, $12.5 million. This is just a different view of the general fund revenue streams, just showing it on a percentage basis. As you can see, real and unsecured property is the greatest share of our general fund revenue stream. These are expenditures by department for fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. I just want to bring your attention to the clerk, as you'll see a decline, a projected decline in their proposed budget. This is because of the census allocation, the 100, one-time $190,000 allocation for the clerk's office for the census. There's also a pretty significant increase in the police department. This is primarily due a result of the PERS increases. About $1.5 million of that increase is tied to PERS. And these are the general fund expenditures by service area. Now you'll see public safety, that's police and fire, is 56%. Recreation is in the general fund, but that's managed by Parks, Recreation and Waterfront. You see the community agencies at 4% and the other various funding, funded departments. Again, public safety is 56%. And if you look at Public Works and Planning combined, they're only 4% of the general fund allocation. Now let's take a look on an all-funds basis. So these are the revenues by funding sourced on an all-funds basis, and you'll see that the general fund is less than 50% of our entire general, of our entire revenue stream. And expenditures by department on an all-funds basis, you see police and fire are now 24% combined, and Public Works is 26% as Public Works is our largest department, and it's funded through a variety of revenue streams, including bonds, tax measures, and other things. Now let's take a look at our staffing. So this is just the org chart for departments that report directly to the city manager. Of course, above the city manager would be council, above council would be the citizens, and over here would also be the city auditor, who isn't elected. There are 12 departments reporting to the city manager, and in those departments, we have about, well, 1,560 FTEs. Between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20, there have been 23 new FTEs added to the budget. These FTEs are tied to grants, either reorganizations in a department, or efficiencies in safety. The departments actually talked in, in their budget presentations at the May 1st and May 3rd meetings about their FTE ads, specific to their departments. And then this chart shows staffing over time. So this is on an all-funds basis, with the 23 new FTEs added from FY '19. So in FY '09, we had 1,670 FTEs. In FY '14, we had 1,450 FTEs. In FY '20 and '21, we have 1,583 FTEs. The budgeted FTEs in '20 and '21 are 87 fewer than what was budgeted in fiscal year 20, 2009. And these FTEs, the new FTEs, are here to address all the new mandates and all the new requirements, the bond measures and everything else that we as an organization are responsible for. So what's included in the fiscal year 20 and 21 as FTEs is only a 5.5% increase from our fiscal year 14 low, and still a 5.2% decrease from our 2009 staffing levels. Council asks for the vacancy trend over the past few years. The vacancy trend was calculated based on the number of separations and number of FTEs, including staff retirements as well as resignations on an annual basis. Our vacancy rates are higher, well, continue to grow, because we are challenged with, or we have a hard time recruiting, because we have long commutes. The unemployment rate is at an all-time low, so the economy is impacting us, and of course, there's a retirement. But this is not unique to Berkeley. Other jurisdictions in the area are facing the same challenge. I'll give you an overview of our unfunded liabilities. Again, this report went to council on March 19th. We're required to present this report to council every two years. The report discloses employee and retiree benefit costs over a 10-year horizon. It also discloses the cost of current active employees. It also includes a discussion on the general obligation bonds, our certificate of participation loans, and other city obligations. And of course, it discusses our infrastructure needs. So again, this is on an all-funds basis. We know one of the city's challenges is managing our unfunded liabilities. One of the largest challenges is tied to our employee benefits, one of the largest challenges tied to our employee benefits is CalPERS, which continues to increase over time. So you can see the rates, again, continuing to increase. In fiscal year 19, as far as dollars, we budgeted $51.86 million for CalPERS. In '20, it's 58.72, and '21, 63.61, and '22, 69.95. So it continues to grow. And because we are a service organization, salary and benefits compiles, compose 55% of our, our budget on an all-funds basis, and 74% of our budget on a general fund basis. For CalPERS, this, these are currently our funded levels, 71% for miscellaneous, 61.2 for police, and 71.8 for fire. Again, council will take action, or presented, presented to council next week will be the section 115 Trust Fund for your review and consideration. And that is a pension trust fund tied to CalPERS, to support our CalPERS funds, unfunded liabilities. And another challenge are our medical plans. So again, this was discussed on March 15, March 19th at the work session on projections of future liabilities. And again, I just want to bring to your attention the various funding levels. All of our labor contracts expire in 2020, and at that time, we have an opportunity to work together with labor and start to, or continue to, address these unfunded liabilities. Capital improvements. At the May 1st Budget and Finance Policy Committee was a presentation on the city's capital improvement program. Again, these slides have been posted to the Budget and Finance Policy Committee website. Here is a summary or a table that summarizes the proposed city expenditure budget for FY ' '20 and FY '21 for all funds as well as the general fund, in comparison with the FY ' '19 adopted budget. You'll see the operating budget shows a decrease of 6.4% on an all-funds basis with, compared with fiscal year 2019. However, the capital budget increases by 180.7%. This large increase is primarily due to $50.7 million being allocated for the rebuild of Tuolumne Camp, $17.3 million being programmed for sanitary sewer rehabilitation, and $14.1 million being programmed for projects tied to T1. We have an annual budget or an annual transfer that goes from the general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund, which supports the capital improvement program every year. It's about $5 million a year. So you see, if we allocate $5 million in revenues, you'll see here the expenditures are 8.6 and 7.9. Either, generally, historically, we have used excess property transfer tax to fund these operations. But what's included in here are proposed, well, requested funding from Parks, not Parks, from Public Works. So the requested funding has not actually been accepted by the city manager, and we're reviewing them. Again, all the funding requests, we're reviewing line by line, and she will present her funding recommendations on Thursday. But included in the request, included in this number, but not actually rolled into the budget at this point for 2020, is the parking lot, they're requesting $600,000 for EV charging stations at university, for alternative fuel, and another $350,000 at the courtyard for charging stations. This is a request. It's in here, but it has not yet been approved by the CM, city manager. A fire station drill tower for $45,000, a hazmat storage upgrade system for $35,000. Also, there's a 50/50, Public Works is asking for $1 million a year to address the backlog of sidewalk repair. In 2021, there's also a $1 million request for ADA, for an ADA transition plan, and again, another million for the sidewalk catch-up, 50/50 catch-up. So that's what's in there, and that's what's being requested. Briefly go over the strategic plan. So there are nine new priorities and 53 carryovers. Some of the priorities are actually programs consisting of multiple projects. For example, IT's digital strategic plan consists of over 100 projects. The total number of priorities has increased by 23%. And the departments with the most priorities, probably no surprise here, planning, followed by Parks, Recreation and Waterfront and Public Works. So the city manager received funding requests of over $13 million from the departments. And as of April 23rd, we've received over $3 million in funding requests from council. $9 million of the department requests are being, we're targeting the general fund. So what we're going to be doing, the city manager and I going through each line item request, determining whether it can be supported or funded through a special fund, which is for the purpose of special funds intent, right? And then see what's left over, what can be deferred perhaps later. Anyways, it's a, it's a laborious detailed process that we're going to right now to figure out how to fit $16 million into a $3 million budget. Finally, this is, these are the next steps, just so you're aware of the process. We already had on March 19th, as I said, the projections of unfunded liabilities report. April 23rd was the presentation from H HCS on CDBG funding and ESG. May 1st and May 3rd, we had a presentation to the policy committee. May 7th is today. And on Thursday, May 9th, we'll be presenting our, the city manager's proposed budget recommendations to the policy committee. That's not in there because it was proposed on Friday. And then again, on And then again, on May 14th, there'll be the first budget, budget public hearing and our AAO, the final AAO, annual adjustment to the annual appropriation ordinance. This is the final one that goes to council where departments can request augmentations to their budget. The fee increases will be on the 14th. There's a lot on that agenda. And then we're asking that council budget referrals be submitted by the 14th so we can pull them all together and give them back to you so you can make some decisions and some assessments. And then on the 28th, the second public hearing is scheduled. And council recommendations on the budget, we're requesting that those proposals be submitted. June 11th, we'll have a robust discussion about the budget. And then on June 25th, council is scheduled to adopt the budget in accordance with state requirements. There you go.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make some-
Yes, Madam City Manager.
Thank you. If I could just make some closing comments. I, I want to thank Teresa and the budget team for their work this year. It's, we've tried to institute a very new process and, and the departments, they've been more than accommodating and coming up with ways in, in which to present their budgets, and we really appreciate their work and their time. So thank you. And to the Budget Finance Policy Committee, thank you for those long two days of budget process. We appreciate your feedback and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So before we go to public comment, I just want to make a few opening comments. I want to thank our budget manager, Teresa Berkeley Simmons, and the staff in the budget office, and all the department heads for all your work in developing this budget. I know that it was a many-month-long process and really appreciate all the thought that was put into this, not only in terms of how we can address the ongoing baseline needs of our community, but new emerging priorities, particularly those that have been adopted by the city council. So I just want to express appreciation for all the hard work, and it will be an ongoing discussion in the coming weeks. I'm sure we'll have questions. There'll be some dialogue with staff as we work to try to find a way to accommodate the various budget referrals that have been made by staff and the city council. I just want to let council know that as I have done the last two other budget cycles and as prior mayors have done, I'm going to be bringing to the city council for the June 11th agenda, my recommendations for the budget. And I know that the Budget and Finance Policy Committee will be having a discussion on this as well. I welcome their input, but I will be working with staff to try to develop budget recommendations to accommodate some of the priority referrals from council as well as those from staff. And there may be things that we do need to defer to the November annual appropriations ordinance process when we know that there'll be excess revenues available because we might not be able to fund them completely with the available resources at this time. But as we have seen in past fiscal years, there's been a significant increase in revenues beyond those projected in our budget, particularly in the area of the transfer tax. So we, we may have additional resources that we can allocate to support some of these priority initiatives. I think the discussion we're going to have on Saturday at the retreat is extremely helpful as well as we start this budget process. We can talk about priorities and that can help frame the discussion. There are many different issues that we have been working to address, not just sort of the most immediate pressing needs of the rising cost of housing and unsheltered homelessness, but infrastructure, public safety, and certainly new issues such as pedestrian safety, which I think we really need to have a renewed focus on. So I just want to let everyone know, you will see something hopefully in the supplemental packet, but if not, I'll be walking it in on June 11th, which will provide time for the council to review and provide input leading to the budget vote on June 25th. So I wanted to just inform everyone about that. And lastly, I just want to thank the city manager and the budget office for your support and your execution of this new process that we're launching this year. The old budget committee, which I, which I served on with Vice Mayor Wangraff and Council Member Han and Councilman Harrison, we conceived this idea of, of having earlier presentations of proposed departmental budgets to allow time for council and members of the public to engage with, with our budget, budget director and city manager on these proposals. And I think that is continuing in our, our goal of increasing transparency and public engagement in our budget process. The budget is the most important policy decision that we make as a city government. It reflects our values and priorities, and we assign revenues to implement those programs. So as much input and participation we can have earlier in the process, I think is extremely important, which is why we created the Budget and Finance Policy Committee, so that there can be a more focused discussion on the part of the council about fiscal policy and about the development of the budget. And so as we are moving to budget updates and the next annual budget process in 2022 and '23-
Yes.
-we will continue this practice, maybe, hopefully, to the extent possible, start it maybe a little bit earlier-
Yes.
-so that we could provide some, some input earlier in the process. And so we're starting this new process. I think, I think the presentations that, that we received at the Budget and Finance Policy Committee were, were really well done. Were very illuminating about all the work that our departments do and about what the needs are. And so I just, I want to encourage all my colleagues, those presentations, I believe, are posted on the committee website. I encourage everyone to take a look at them. I know several council members did attend the, the budget committee meetings, and I, I think it provides some important context to us as we are working to evaluate and vote on this budget proposal. So I want to thank the city manager and Ms. Berkeley Simmons and all the staff for your commitment to increasing transparency in our budget process and in providing additional information to the council so we can evaluate this budget proposal. Madam City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I often, in, in no way do I mean to overlook our finance director, but without the revenues coming into our city and the hard work that our finance department does to make sure that we're collecting and we're managing our finance as well, I just want to thank Henry for his efforts as well. It's a team effort with our budget office and our finance department, so thank you.
How could I forget about Henry? So I've had the pleasure of actually talking to finance department staff and, and division managers, and they're really on the front lines of collecting revenue and making sure that the various tax measures and bond measures that we pass are being implemented. And we have in recent years adopted four measures, Measure U1, Measure T1, Measure O, and Measure P. All those finance staff are working to implement and not only doing billing and account, account receivable and auditing to make sure we're getting sufficient compliance to receive those revenues, but making sure that we are following requirements around disclosure and reporting of those funds. So thank you for all your work as well in, in helping administer our, the collection of these revenues that we can implement our city budget. So with that, let's go to public comment on item one, the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 proposed budget. And would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Now's the time.
Okay, Russell Bates here. Good evening, y'all. It was interesting. I think you might have been in one of the closed sessions when I heard one of the suits over here out of context say something to the effect like, there's, well, there's some of the usual crazy people here tonight. And I thought, well, geez, that's kind of rude. He could at least wait until the council comes back and sits down, damn. Little bit of humor there, or an attempt at humor anyhow. The free box at People's Park got taken out at 5:30 this morning.
So, Mr. Bates, are you addressing the proposed fiscal year-
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
About the police- Want to just make sure you're focusing on-
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I don't want to throw anybody off track here. Thanks again for not having the Berkeley Police Department come in along with them. It's very important that that distance is kept for now and the future because collateral damage has been known to happen when difficult situations are faced and people have to respond to them having some kind of integrity to go on. Here, we have the right to stand up for People's Park and the right to ask that the police of Berkeley not be allowed to assist with any more UC involved. Removal of free boxes. I'm reminded again of Bedouin City that's been wiped out by the Israeli Defense Forces about 150 times. They rebuild every single time. Kind of reminds me of People's Park in a way. So keep the police away, please, and let us do our thing there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional public comment on the fiscal 2021 proposed budget? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alex Williams. First, I would like to thank Ms. Berkeley for the excellent presentation and also the city council and all of our city workers and volunteers who make these meetings and presentations run so smoothly. While I certainly appreciate the incredible work being done by all parties, I would just like to strongly encourage the council that these projections fundamentally rely on the continuation of the current upward trends of the, the current economic bubble which we find ourselves. I would just simply like to remind the council that with the current system, a crash is a mathematical inevitability and, but it need not be the end of our societal upswing, provided that we throw our collective wills and efforts behind building out sustainable infrastructure and sociable system, and societal systems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name is Charles Clark from District 6. You might recall last week that I spoke in support of the Mobile Crisis Team in the Mental Health Division, which I repeat now, but the reasons for my support could apply to the other city services that you're going to be considering during this budget cycle. So first, the service should be important and effective, and I imagine just about every service on the list that we can think of would satisfy that goal. But we taxpayers depend on you council members to determine that a task is worth its funding level, so keep that consideration in mind. Second, the service should complement or coordinate with other city services, such as the Mobile Crisis Team or the 5150 ambulance service will complement BPD. So look for those opportunities as you consider what to fund. Finally, the service should be something the city is uniquely positioned or empowered to provide, like streetlights. On a separate note, it's worth recalling that the Berkeley Pier itself was built 92 years ago by a private company. What worked once could work again. So I wish you wisdom as you consider the importance, effectiveness, complementarity, and uniqueness of all the things the city does and spends money on. I wish you well.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for trying to increase transparency. I think that's very important. I hope that going forward in this process, you'll solicit more citizen input. I think that's particularly important in light of what we saw last week at city council where suddenly a million-dollar-plus contract for Hargreaves appeared on the consent agenda. I felt totally blindsided by this, and it took very little time to do research on Hargreaves, which is the company that was about to be granted over $1 million, when the marina itself is operating at a million-dollar-plus annual deficit and is facing $106 million in unfunded repairs. When I did research on Hargreaves, I found that it had a record of shoddy construction, unsafe construction, and that it, there had been multiple lawsuits against the company. And in one case, when a Florida judge awarded a municipality $1.3 million for Hargreaves' shoddy plans, Hargreaves in turn declared bankruptcy. In their bankruptcy filing, they claimed to have only $50,000 in assets, which I find remarkable for a firm that had three offices, does massive international work, and has 30 employees. So obviously, ordinary citizens can help you do the research that you don't always have time to do. But we need your cooperation. We need to know when things are suddenly going to fly onto the consent agenda for that amount of money for an entity like the marina that's already considerably in debt. So I ask for your help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work here too, and I'm well aware of how difficult it is to do all this when you're understaffed. But I'd like to also reiterate what was said by the gentleman earlier and also by, by Eva. First, we really do have to stack our programs, and we've got to do a much better job of looking where there are needs and also the ability to meet those needs within the community so that we can make these programs work together and have one pot of money do a lot of different things. An example might be an apprenticeship after we train homeless and at-risk youth for, for construction problems where they're, they're working for the city under a union apprenticeship, and they're getting a lower wage than average, but they're also getting free housing and free medical care and free training so that they're still making a living wage. We could do a lot more to enhance our affordable housing that way, and we could serve more than one community that way, and that's but one example. There are many. And I would like to find a way for us to facilitate these different departments talking to each other so that we can build on the resources we already have in the community rather than constantly running the wheel and doing things the expensive way. I'd also like to talk about, to some extent, about the incredible amount of money we spend on consultants, which seems to take up an inordinate amount of the budget. And it seems that, you know, again, if you can have some sort of citizen interaction where people are willing to volunteer their time, you can get a lot more bang for the buck. I found a way to expand pathways for, by quite a bit that's already being used in Reno, and no one's ever brought this up, but there are a lot of much less expensive programs out there that will even be financed outside for 1% a year instead of having to deal with expensive bond measures, which are overly burdensome to a lot of people. So thank you for that. I look forward to seeing a better mechanism so that we can incorporate more of our community resources into the process.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Kelly Hammergren. I want to say that there were only two of us, I think, two citizens who made it through both days of the budget, Steve Cromer and I. I didn't see anyone else there. And those presentations on the first and the third were really excellent. And I know our city manager has promised that next time we do this, they'll be recorded. And I, I just wish it had been recorded this first time, but I know that we're working on that, and I'm confident that you will have it done the next time around because there was just so much excellent information. And I think that having those committee meetings like that, it is hard for people to attend during the daytime, and the new committee structure is really a huge involvement of time for all of you and for us as citizens, but it does improve transparency and it does improve our opportunity to communicate with you, although that is limited by the daytime hours. I did just have one little budget question, just to kind of throw this out. And when we had the presentations at the budget committee, we heard, I thought Berkeley was self-insured, but I heard that the Tuolumne Camp was insured- but I heard that the Tuolumne Camp was insured and that there are insurance payments. And I was just kind of, I know this is like a big overview, but we have like $50 million that we're going to spend on it, and there's not any place where I could find how much of that is being reimbursed by insurance and how much the City of Berkeley is having to pick up or fill in or something like that. So, that was just a question, and I look forward to going over my notes and reading all the details again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for everybody's hard work. Your presentation was excellent. Thank you. I was wondering if it's possible if there could be some compensation for the now missing training for Urban Shield. It was free, and it provided a lot of training for EMS, fire, police. If we're looking to, you know, do something, I don't know what they have in the way of plans for that. Also, I was wondering if we could have a budget for some educational grants. I don't know, for, say, like BCM, like I'm doing on my videotaping, et cetera. I think that would be great. Some affordable housing. I know we have Measure P. Oh, I'm sorry. Measure O. I mixed them up. And I think we need to do a lot more. I know that we're doing a lot, but I think we need to do a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you all for coming tonight and for your comments, and just want to remind everyone that this is the beginning of a two-month budget process, and that at our next meeting on May 14th is the first public hearing on the proposed budget, and on May 28th is our second public hearing, and then the council must adopt the budget before July 1st. So, June 25th is the scheduled date for budget adoption. So, with that, we'll go to Councilwoman Droste, Chair of the Budget and Finance Policy Committee.
Thank you so much for your presentation and for all of your work, and I want to thank you and the rest of the staff and department heads and our city manager's office for really an informative two days of presentations to the Budget Policy Subcommittee. It was really terrific, and we learned a lot. And since I spoke a lot at those meetings, I'm going to limit my comments here. I have just a couple of comments and questions. I first just really would like to make sure that when this presentation gets into the final packet, that we include the auditor on the first page in terms of the City of Berkeley org chart or star chart. That's really, that's really great to see. And then also, I have a question around our business license tax and the revenues and why they are down 3.49% in fiscal year 2019, or that's the estimate that I read. It seems to me that with the expansion in taxable properties and the increased cannabis revenue, I'm just curious why the decrease of around 3%? And any of these questions, you can also take offline, too.
The reason why is the number is coming from the adopted budget, not the actual numbers. They were coming from the budget number from the previous year.
And so, but I'm just curious, it seems odd to me that there would be a decrease. Is there a rationale why that would be?
The percentage, the variance, was coming from the adopted budget that we did before, not the actual numbers. The actual numbers actually went up 3.5.
Right.
But if you compare it with what we said we were going to make from the budget that we had, that was what it was.
Okay.
Not the actuals.
Thank you. That seems strange to me, so thank you for clarification. And then in terms of the pie charts, I really appreciate the revenue summary, the line item, and then the pie charts. That's helpful for the way I process this information. And then I see with the general fund expenditures, the summary by department, and then on the next page, it has the expenditures by service area. My only request would be if we could either have a line item of percentage of expenditure summaries by department, that would be helpful, because the service area pie chart is helpful in itself. But what I'm also interested in seeing is a disaggregation of the general government piece of the pie, so where does IT fit in there, and finance, and disaggregating planning and public works. That would be helpful, just in the future. It's not necessary for this go-around, but I think that would be helpful. I can, you know, I can do it for the next few hearings. It's not a problem, but I think just moving forward, having some consistency, either having department expenditures reflected and then disaggregated by service area. But other than that, I'm pleased to begin these processes, and I look forward to hearing my colleagues' comments.
Councilmember Dowler?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of things I wanted to point out. One, on page 12 or 8 of 560, in the general fund revenue projections, it says that the total is 392.2 million, but it's actually 392.5. So, I was curious if, because if you add the 194.50, I think it's a 198. Anyway, that was something. And then also, I was curious as to, I have a whole bunch of questions, which I guess I can take offline because I've had, I'm tired and I've already been through this whole budget process for two days and had hell of questions, but I was curious as to why the CAFER, which now I kind of understand what that means, is done in one accounting, and then you have the general accepted accounting principles in another. Why aren't they both generally accepted accounting principles? I was curious.
Okay, so we have two different things that happens in our CAFER. We have the general accepted principles, which is GAAP, which is usually how we treat the enterprise funds, proprietary and enterprise funds. And we have GASB, who treats governmental accounting. So, what happens is, because we have enterprise funds that we treat like an enterprise, an enterprise fund simply means it's supposed to be, we use a CRO method of accounting for them. General government is usually cash basis, so we have to blend both of them. That's why our CAFER is not, you can't read them and understand them unless you understand those two things. So, that's why we have modified our CRO. So, what we do, we take the enterprise fund, we use the GAAP method, we take the governmental section of the CAFER, we use GASB, and then we blend them in, which is called modified accrual. So, you have to understand both of them in order to make it work. That's why you can use either one of those when you're looking at the CAFER.
Okay, I understand it a little bit better now, just a little bit. And then on page 16 of 560 or page 20, it talks about the number, it gives you the number, I guess, that's FTEs in each department, but it says for council and mayor, it's 12. Why is that? I mean, I know some people, I mean, there's nine of us, all of us have aides, so that's 18 right there, and some of us have two, so I'm curious as to where 12 comes from.
It's really just a base number because you can hire as many as you want, so it can go up. Like you said, some departments, I mean, some council members have six, some have two, so it's a base number, and it fluctuates wildly throughout the year and from year to year.
So, it's budgeted for certain, it's budgeted, it's a budget, not dollar amount. Is that correct? They get a dollar amount to apply their position?
You can hire, they can actually hire as many FTEs based on your budget? Yeah. So, this is, should be mayor, let me see, where am I?
It's after the library.
So, mayor and council, plus probably your legislative aide?
Yeah, I mean, that equals 18 right there, so I think that number should increase. I'm just saying. It's not accurate. And then also, I was curious as to why with Parks, Recreation, and Waterfront, it doesn't reflect the part-time. I know this is full-time, but I mean, you could do, because in the budget meetings, they said that it's up to 250 people, and here, it doesn't give an, it's like 100. I mean, yeah.
Councilmember Dowler, if I can just, if I can share one point on the positions, I just want to make sure we're clear. The mayor and council aren't counted, you aren't employees. So, that 12 is a budgeted amount for staff only. It does not include all of you. So, the 12 is correct because it is the budgeted FTE numbers that we have. So, nine, and then the mayor's office, I believe, has three. But you have a budget for one FTE if you decide it, or two FTEs if you decide it. But this is not, this does not include you all as council and mayor in those numbers.
Why not?
You're not considered employees. You're elected officials, so you're not deemed an employee.
Well, just kind of, I mean, I don't know, it doesn't reflect what that reality is, so that's what I was worried about. I'm too tired to even go into any of my other questions, so I'll take them offline.
Thank you. And if you have very specific questions, I would definitely encourage you to get them to the city manager, Ms. Berkeley, and we're going to have many more meetings where we're going to talk about this, so.
One more thing.
Yes, Councilwoman Dowler?
Yeah, I think that, and I've stated this before, I mean, I was hesitant about those budget meetings, and I went and I lived through it, and it was beneficial, but I think that it would really be beneficial and more transparent if it was videotaped, because the public really needed to see and hear for themselves what was being presented. And, you know, like right now, there's not that many people here, but at least this is being videotaped and they can see it on their own time. So, I would really like to encourage at least to videotape that and to even have it in the evening so that the public can be presented, because, you know, 99% of the time, or I don't know, before this council, we used to have full meetings, but I don't know what happened to people, but I just think it would be beneficial, benefit the public to hear and see. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dowler? I think those are excellent points, and, you know, the next time we do this, I think we should, to the extent we can, do it in the evening and maybe even do it here so that it can be broadcast on VTV, and we can have a web stream that people can access later. So, I think those are all excellent suggestions. Madam, City Manager?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can certainly come back to the Budget and Finance Policy Committee with some considerations and suggestions on how to improve the process. I do think a debriefing later on as we get an opportunity and a return to council with ideas on how we can improve.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wenkraff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say that I very much appreciate your efforts to shed some light on the budget. I've seen huge improvement over the years, and I think we're really heading in the right direction, and I just wanted to give you a shout-out for doing that. Some people say that the budget is the most important policy document that a city can have, and looking at the pie chart of general fund expenditures by service area, I'm a little concerned because Public Works and Planning are only 4% of the total expenditures, and they're probably two of the most important departments that we have in terms of infrastructure and our city. I mean, you know, that's how departments interface with the public, through planning and Public Works and Parks. So, you've combined the two, and I'm wondering if you have a breakdown. I know that Public Works gets a lot of their money from other places, but what about planning?
Planning is an enterprise fund, supported by an enterprise fund. Permit Service Center funding, all of that money goes to planning, and the majority of the funding received by planning is tied to that enterprise fund. So, they really only need just a very small, well, I wouldn't say they only need, but they're only allocated a very small portion of the general fund because they're substantially supported by their enterprise fund, the Permit Service Fund.
And I don't want to get into the details, but do you have the numbers on the deviation between revenues coming into the planning department and expenditures? And, you know, are we anywhere near being sustainable?
Oh, yes. So, we do have the numbers. Actually, if you look in at the budget book online, there's a section, I think it's called Departments, and the Permit Service Center Fund is in there, and there's a forecast tied to it. But yeah, so far, the planning department is sustainable with the Permit Service Center Fund. They had a really huge fund balance at one point, which got us through the recession, and now they're starting to spend that funding, but it's sustainable, and there is a forecast in the budget book that you can see under that tab.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Hello, Teresa Henry. Good to see you both. Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you to all the department heads for all the time it took to do those two budget days. I'm so glad I was able to drop in for as much of that as I did. If you could just help me out at sort of a conceptual level, if you'd help me kind of picture how council priorities are manifested in the document we have before us today, I'm thinking in particular of Vision Zero, which the council famously identified as its first priority before I got here, but I'm glad they all did that. But you're thinking about the many pieces that make up a plan like that, like our 2017 bicycle plan that I was just looking at, that very, forecast completing that by 2035, which, you know, if this is our first priority, that doesn't sound very ambitious to me, and there's a lot of capital improvements that come along with that. Not that we should be comparing ourselves constantly to our neighboring cities, but I know next door, Oakland, is actually voting tonight on a $100 million, they're calling it a historic repaving plan, that, you know, when I look at our numbers, they're bigger than we are, but not that many times bigger than we are. Just trying to picture what something being our number-one priority looks like in the budget. You know, if we're really tackling Vision Zero at the rate we want to, you know, there are some exciting bumps in staffing at, you know, planning, et cetera. Is that pegged to a project like that? I can imagine needing far more new planners or far more new transportation staff for really trying to, you know, execute this in the way we want. I know there's far more going on that's always visible, but it always seems like we might be able to be doing a little more. If you could help me picture where something like that is showing up in here, that'd be great.
I was going to say, included in one of the council members, not the council members, in the department's funding requests, and also from the council member, is an FTE. It's a planner that's set to focus on Vision 20, is it Vision 20-0?
Vision Zero?
Yeah. Vision Zero.
2020, 2050. There's a lot of visions going on.
We have a lot of programs. Vision Zero. So, we are, and the departments, as they determine what their needs are, they have submitted requests for funding to help provide those services. And I know for sure there's a planner on the list that's been requested by Public Works, a senior planner. The Public Works Director just handed me a list of information. May I call you up? Phil?
Hi, Phil.
As Phil comes up, councilmember- As Phil comes up, Councilmember Robinson, so there are multiple places to look for how we're budgeting for these number-one-type projects. So coming up at our retreat for council, there will be a list of those projects that are in our strategic plan, as for the 2021 budget, by importance. So for example, streets, you will have a list of things that are going in under streets, homelessness, you'll have a list for those, affordable housing and climate action. So I've broken them out of the full strategic plan, so that you can actually see narrative. And I think what we're asking about now is dollars. So you'll see narrative, and now we can hear from the director on dollars.
So to answer your question, in terms of Vision Zero, which is a high priority, not only for the city council, the whole city, and especially the Public Works Department and our Transportation, we have, of our 20.5 new positions, six are associated with transportation. And that's not just the backfilling for the vacant positions now. We have a senior planner that we're currently working on right now to come in, that's going to lead Vision Zero. And then, as kind of follow-up from what the mayor was bringing into play last fall, we have associate traffic engineer, traffic engineer inspector, and two assistant engineers assigned and dedicated towards transportation, to help drive, not only move forward, take out of the master plans for both the PED and bike improvements, but also combine those along with a lot of the difference, a lot of the different specific referrals by council. Take that all into play, work with the community, and then bring the Vision Zero idea and concept into life during fiscal year 2020.
Beautiful. That's very exciting. Thank you so much. I guess the last thing I'll note, I was just biking down to a meeting in Emeryville about the census the other morning, and I knew when I crossed the border into Oakland, because that's when the bike lanes started, right past Alcatraz, but I'm very, very excited to see that work happening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrison.
Yes, thank you very much. This is my third budget cycle, and I think the linkage of strategic priorities to the budget has improved a great deal, and the clarity of the document, and I really appreciate all the work that went into this. I wanted to make one point about planning. It is true that they are funded by permits largely, but I think in some ways that undercuts our long-range planning efforts in the planning department. And I'm looking for us to try to, and we'll talk more about this on Saturday, link not just the strategic plan, but also the RRV to the budget, because we end up with 53 referrals to planning, and we don't have people to do that work. So we've got to figure out how all these pieces fit together, but I think we're making a lot of progress in that direction. We have a lot of questions, but they're, I'm going to do them in order of the document you sent, because that's what I got first, before I saw the slides. One thing is just a comment, and that is on health liabilities. We have engaged, I want the public to know this, in an effort with all of our employee organizations, to look at how we can overall reduce healthcare costs. It's not just a matter of having employees pay more and us pay less. We're engaged in looking at how we can reduce the costs overall. And I just think that's a piece we don't often say, and that is really important in looking at our budget. I had one specific question on page four. Do we have all the money we need for the transition to IRMA? Is that all budgeted here? There's a chart later that shows the stages on page nineteen. Has this all been fully budgeted, or are we still looking for additional funding for that?
The $15.1 million that was requested is fully budgeted.
But does that carry us all the way through Phase Three?
Yeah, it's, yes.
It's a complete project. Oh, great.
If we, if we, if we run into any override, any overruns, we will come back to council, because sometimes what we're seeing is as we go out to bid for those added and additional modules, that costs go up. But if that happens, we will certainly come back to council with anything new, and you'll get to deliberate at that time.
Right. But right now, we plan for the, into all the phases.
Right now, we budget it.
That is fantastic news. Okay. On page five, I have a question about one of the council priorities, policies, and it's just something we're going to have to keep discussing, and that is number six. It says, no, five, sorry. No, six, I'm going to do six. Requiring enterprise and grant funds to balance, and new programs to pay for themselves. We have priorities that can't pay for themselves. Homelessness cannot pay for itself. We're not going to be charging the homeless fees in order to pay for their services. We may be able to get revenues, but we're often going to find a contribution from the general fund. So I'm a little concerned about the statement of this budget policy, and I just feel we need to really think about that. We may have things we want to do. We might want to do more long-range planning, and it won't pay for itself, because we won't have the fees. So I just think that's a kind of funny formulation, and it's always struck me as slightly odd. And we need to really think that through. More specifically, on page ten, I just want to say that we have the issue of the transfer tax. There will be additional money. I hope when we look at that in November with the excess revenues, we don't forget that the council sent forward a proposal to use a portion of the transfer tax for energy improvements in people's homes, that they can get a rebate, rebate a part of the property transfer tax. So I want to make sure that that head towards the November process, because we won't have all that money, because people are hopefully going to be making improvements to their homes.
Councilwoman Harrison, just on that point.
Yeah.
I think there was like a municipal code amendment that we had to adopt to enable homeowners to take advantage of that rebate. And so that's something we should.
Get back to.
Get back on.
Right. Well, I should say also that the Baso analysis that's being done, though, contemplates how it might fit in with this policy. So the staff is already working really hard on identifying things that would be qualifying if we passed it. I just want to point that out for November, before I forget. Okay, on page sixteen, one of the things that always concerns me when we get to this point in the year, we're in May, we talk about 2019 adopted, and we have adopted 1,560 people, but we're really far down the road in the year. I would like to see these staff numbers, what we have right now, for each department. You know, we're far enough along to know what the real reality is for this year. Where are we for each department and their staff numbers? So if we could see that next time.
The actual, what's actually in place is what you see in the FY '20 and FY '21. The departments have actually requested an additional, like thirty new FTEs.
So you're asking what's filled?
What's filled right now.
Oh, filled, not budgeted.
What's filled, yeah. So in other words, you know, we have twenty-one people in HR, but there's only twenty, and then they're asking for twenty-two, so that's an increase of two over what they have right now. That's an easier way for me to think about it. I really appreciate that our salary savings are going down, which means we're hiring people, which is fantastic news. And then on the slides, I just had a couple of specific questions that have to do with revenues, I think primarily. One, the sugar, sweet, and beverage tax, is that in the slide on budget versus actuals general fund revenues? Is that included? I know you said U1 wasn't, but are the sugar, sweet, and beverage revenues in here? And why do we treat that differently than U1? Because they're both really general fund monies. It seems kind of a funny thing that we look at those differently.
So sugar, sweet, and beverage has been in place longer than U1, and so it was, because they're all general fund revenues, they were all lumped in as a general fund, but when council made it clear that they wanted to isolate U1, and we had the discussion about the allocation of the sugar, sweet, and beverage, we then started to isolate the revenue tied to sugar, sweet, and beverage as well, and track it. It'll be much easier for us to do when we have IRMA than it was for us to do in funds.
Okay, so in the future, we'll see it pulled out? Yeah, okay, that's great, thank you. Also, I just wanted to note on the U1 funding, we actually are looking to be at about 5.8 million, because in addition to that nice, healthy $5 million we're getting from all the new people paying in, we also realized in doing the business license tax, I think, that we were collecting from people that maybe were evading the taxation before, who should have been paying, and we also included single-family homes. So suddenly, we have, I think this number may be a little low, is what I'm saying. So we can talk about it next, I just wanted to put that question out there. And I hope next time, we're going to, I guess we're going to be dealing with the transfer tax until November. Is that correct? Okay. And then finally, my last question is on the slide, this is second to last slide, funding requests, where we have the 13 million, and we have it broken into general fund and special funds, and then council budget referrals. It'd be really helpful to see this in terms of one-time and ongoing requests. So if you could provide that for the next meeting, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a quick point of clarification before we go to Councilwoman Kesarwani. So you had mentioned, Ms. Berkeley, that in the budget tables, we're sort of reporting the receipts from the sugar, sweet, and beverage tax, and measure U1 tax receipts, which was, that was an increase in the business license tax that, for rental property. And so we're reporting out those tax receipts, but for just purposes of just accounting, so we know what's coming in. But those revenues are being collected and are being deposited into the general fund, correct? And as in accordance with the statute, as well as the law? I just want to just clarify for legal purposes. Okay. Councilmember Kesarwani.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Berkeley Simmons, for your presentation. Thank you, Henry, I don't want to forget to do that. I appreciate all the information here, as well as the, I want to actually thank the department heads and other staff who presented to us on May 1st and May 3rd. That was incredibly helpful, and then it's great to kind of reiterate those numbers that we talked about tonight. I am not going to talk about expenditures, because I think we will, we will be talking a lot more about those. I just wanted to go over a couple of things on revenues. I think some of my colleagues have already brought this up. So the, I actually also had a question about measure U1. So here we are, actually, I know it's not included here, because it's, because we just discussed that. So, but you did mention, so, but the assumption is 5 million?
Yes.
Okay. And so, and is that, because I, and I did realize that that is actually an increase from what the ballot measure, and I think what, you know, previously, I think the hack thought we were dealing with something on the order of more like three and a half million. So we are seeing that those numbers are higher. Okay. Okay, thank you. And then, and I know we will, we will be looking at measure P separately, that's 6 million. So I think both of those revenue sources will give us an important opportunity to address affordable housing and our homelessness needs. And then on this, then I wanted to turn to the, so it looks like we have slide eight, you know, showing our 3.1 million to program in fiscal year 20, and then 3.3 million in fiscal year, oh, I'm sorry, 3.3 in fiscal year 20, and 3.1 slightly less in fiscal year 21. So, you know, I'm looking forward to the presentation tomorrow, where we will get the city manager's recommendations. And just a point of clarification, so perhaps 200,000 of that in fiscal year 20 will be one-time, and you're going to assume 3.1 million will be ongo, a recommendation of ongoing expenditures?
Our goal will be to sort all of those out and have them listed by one-time and ongoing.
Okay.
Most of the requests are ongoing, but there are some one-time costs as well.
Okay.
Which we may want to consider when to address those, November or current, and we may want to consider one-time, ongoing expenses that council may have, and consider them right now as well, too. So we'll look at the full list from the city manager's office from departments tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. And then I just wanted to take a bit of time on slide nineteen, on staffing, which I thought was, I found very interesting, because I think as we learned on May 1st and 3rd, it was at least a reminder to us that when we send all of these referrals, when we pass all of these great items, that it actually requires people to implement, to make the change that we all want to see. And so, can you just, and I know that the numbers are off to the side, so fiscal year 2009, we were at a high there of, can you clarify, how many FTEs do we have in FY '09?
1,670.22.
Okay. And then we hit this low in fiscal year 14 of exactly 1,450 FTEs.
Well, 1,449.62.
One, all right. I'm just going to write down the exact, 1,449.62. Okay. And then, obviously, it's, it looks like, you know, we're building back up capacity. I think this is, and, you know, and I totally recognize, you know, we need to add more staff for implementation of our bond measures and the new mandates that we talked a lot about on May 1st and 3rd. I think this is more of a philosophical question that I don't know if you'll have the answer to right now, but, you know, I think about how big should our city government be? And, you know, that FY '09 number of 6, 1,670 versus where we were at FY '14, a low of 1,449, versus where we proposed to be in FY '20 of 1,580. I think it does raise that question of how many staff do we need to execute our mission? And I think, the reason I think this is important is because we know that every time we add an FTE, we grow our unfunded pension liabilities that we then have to take on. Do you have a rule of thumb, you know, how many, how much does an additional FTE add to our pension liability?
I think this is about 15% is what I heard, that, not specifically the city of Berkeley, but California-wide, it's about 15% into your, each time you have an employee, the percentage of the base is about 15% added to the unemployment, I mean, unfunded liabilities.
Okay, 15%.
Of the base, of the person's base.
Of the person's salary base.
Yeah, so if the person makes $100,000, it's about $15,000.
Okay. Okay, interesting. And that's just like a California-wide, and ours might be more, slightly more, slightly less. Okay. Okay, well, you know, that's all I really have for this meeting. Thank you again for your presentation. I really appreciate it. Look forward to the meeting tomorrow, and I think, you know, we have a lot of important priorities that we need to address, that my colleagues have already noted. Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday, Thursday. I'm so excited, I want it to be tomorrow. But thank you, thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for wonderful work. Once again, you condensed this unwieldy series of numbers and words into a cohesive story. And thank you. And I want to ask just a couple of questions to help me understand the story. So the hotel tax, I'm here on page nine, the general fund revenue summary. My question is, does the hotel tax include short-term rentals?
No, we track them differently. I'm not sure where you have it here. Yes, in this, in this, in this, yes, it does.
Oh, okay. And then also, with the same, the same item, well, I guess related to it, the hotel tax numbers seem to be fairly static going across the fiscal years 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Yet, we have a new hotel coming online in the next couple of years, and also, I believe our numbers for the short-term rentals are likely to increase as we collect from more operators, because I just know, I know there are more operators coming online in Berkeley besides the big one, which we will not name.
Yes. Okay. We're assuming there's going to be an increase in both the short-term rentals and in, there was a slight decline in hotel tax last year, and it was attributable to short-term rentals. The hotels were telling us, because they were the one that gave us the projection numbers that we use. So they were saying some of the short-term rentals is probably impacting them, but just a little bit marginally. So we have an increase in short-term rentals over 1.1 that we collected last year, and then tiny little bit of 2.2% drop in the hotel, but the short-term rentals was way beyond the drop, so it was pretty good.
Okay. And also regarding, I'm just curious for my own benefit, everyone's benefit here, other revenues, just what is a general, in a general sense, what is it, what are some examples of other revenues?
Actually, it's like a hundred lines long. Anything less than, anything less than, anything less than a million dollars, I'll give an example. I have them all in red here. So you have parking meter, you have dog license, you have fire permits, you have anything that's just, that's not big enough to be, to be part of itself, like a major fund. So we have about 100 lines, that's what makes them up. There's 30,000 RPP, just 40,000, some dog license, 50K, some There are 30,000 RPP, just 40,000, some dog license, 50K, something like that. We just add all them together and put it all the, all the revenues.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, I just have one quick question before to Councilmember Hahn. I know we have a currently active collection agreement with Airbnb, and there are other short-term rental hosting platforms that we are aware of. There's HomeAway, there's VRBO, and just curious if we, somewhat tangentially related, I'm curious if we are in the process of trying to negotiate collection agreements with those other hosting platforms?
We, we had two, we had a conversation with, I think it's HomeAway, and they're in discussion with my office about that, and I'm not sure of the other one, but I think there's two of them talking about whether they should.
VRBO.
Yeah, one of them. The two of them are in discussion with us. So the moment we finish that one, we will send it to the city attorney.
I know that, you know, when we were discussing the Airbnb collection agreement, I think I met with the people that run HomeAway, and they were very eager to try to negotiate a collection agreement, so.
I think it's Hosewell.
Yeah.
Hosewell.
And then I think Expedia has some sort of role in running one of the hosting platforms. So, thank you for that information. And if I can be of any assistance, please let me know.
Okay, got it, you know.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you so much. I join all my colleagues in complimenting everybody on the work done this year in particular. I was able to attend most of the presentations at the Budget Committee, and they were outstanding. And I think that, when we think that this is something that had not been done before in Berkeley, and this was our first year, and we have a relatively new Budget Committee, and just a completely new way of doing things, I just, I think it was just outstanding. It was stellar, it was interesting, it was well-done, great exercise. I, I wish more members of the public had come, but I do think that if we continue to have this level of presentation, that there, that, that the word's going to get out, we can get the word out better, and I'm sure all of us on council will be encouraging our constituents to, to come, and I know there's lots of good suggestions for little improvements, including microphones. But, for those of us whose hearing is not 100%, but really, it was just outstanding, and I think the presentations you've done for us today with PowerPoints and things, it's just such a huge leap forward from, from even just last time, and I know how much work that is, I just, I can't say enough about how great I think this process is going. So, a couple of just little things, actually, in the, in the written packet, I know we haven't talked much about that, and you don't really need to look at it, but on page three, we, you talk about, the report identified 1.5 billion in unfunded liabilities tied to employee benefits and infrastructure. And I know that we talk about those two things that weigh always. It's very common for us to call them both unfunded liabilities, and unless I have a misunderstanding of what a liability means, I would really like us to just talk about those two things differently, because the pension funds, they are a liability. We are literally on the hook for that. We have to pay that. The infrastructure, there may be some of it that's an actual liability, in that we're under court order or something, but otherwise, it's just a whole ton of stuff that we've identified, that we know we really, really need to do. But for me, that is technically different from a liability, and I feel like maybe we should just use different nomenclatures. So I may have a misunderstanding of how the term liability is used in this context, but I guess I just feel like, in, they're different. It's not great to defer maintenance and capital projects, but we do have the power to do that, and we do not have the power to not meet our actual liabilities. So, I just, as a suggestion, if it makes sense, to kind of get out of the habit of lumping those two things and, and using the same word for both of them. But you, you could also tell me that I'm wrong about that, so, it sounds, it looks like maybe you had a response to that?
Yeah.
Yes, I do. I, I think, and then, Henry, please chime in after. I do think that we need to differentiate, because having a term of unfunded deferred maintenance sounds more appropriate to infrastructure, doesn't mean, it also could be somewhat of a liability, right? When you look at the cause, that could result from unfunded deferred maintenance, but I think we just need to be really clear. I like separating them out, too, but we've used them, we've grouped it together here, but we should in the future separate that out.
I was, I was just going to say, that's what the CAF does. Unfunded liabilities are the pension and the OAP. Any other thing is not unfunded liabilities, so that's.
Deferred maintenance.
Okay, great. And I think that's been the habit for a long time in the city, so, but it'd be great for us to break the habit and come up with some, I mean, even deferred maintenance is not necessarily unfunded until we have decided that we need to do it and we don't have the funds. So, I just think, you know, calling it what it is, it's like really important projects that we know we need to fund, we know we need to do them, but we're not on the hook legally, yet. So, okay, couple of other little things on page, well, first of all, I was going to say, I think it was very cute that you guys used a flower, rather than something that, that seemed more tense, but it does seem like you have a lot of masters. But I appreciate the happy depiction of that. I, I guess you've kind of spoken, I was curious why you weren't including the U1 and P revenues, but I think you've spoken to that a little bit, and I have some thoughts about that, that I'll save for private conversation, just take too long here. On the question, I'm on page 19, I think Councilmember Kesarwani was kind of skirting around this question of, well, she asked certain questions that had to do with, like, wow, we had a lot of staff, then we have less, and now we're going towards more. One of the questions I have, as someone who hasn't been here a long, long time, is, what did we lose? I'm always curious, like, what, what functions were being done that we lost? And you don't need to answer that today, but I do think it would be interesting to know. I know just, one conversation I had with Scott from Parks one time, I had a lot of constituents who were complaining about the weeds not being, wasn't this year, it seems like they've complained less, but about all the weeds that had grown in the medians, and why was it taking so long for those to get cut? You know, and I tell everybody, they grow at the same time all over Berkeley, and it's, you know, it's hard to get, to get to every single patch at the same time, but I asked Scott, like, what's the deal? Why do our medians look bad all the time? And he said that 30% of their maintenance staff had been cut in that downturn. And I was like, wow, that's a really big piece of information that's important for me to know, and it helps when I tell my constituents why we can't get to things as quickly as they might like us to. And I just think that information would be useful for us on council. What did we lose when we made those cuts? What functions were taken away? And that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to restore them. We may have different priorities, and we may be restoring positions in a different way, but I would love to know, what, what did we lose at that time? I think I had one other little comment. Sorry, thank you. Where was it? Well, maybe that was it. Yeah, I think that was it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davila.
I got a little bit of energy. So, I was curious, who determines what's, what allocations go through for staff? Is that the city manager?
Can you repeat your ask?
Who determines what the staff budget requests get allocated?
So, recommendations come from the department heads, and it comes to the city manager for review, and I give a recommendation to this body.
Okay, that's, that's the answer I was looking for. And then, I just wanted to put a couple of things, well, I'll ask this question first. How is the cannabis going to affect this budget? Since.
Do you have a specific question? Are you talking about?
Like, is it gonna, is it gonna?
It's already rolled into the revenue projections. So we have about half a million dollars in fiscal year '20 and '21, including in the revenue number, and so it, it's reflected in the numbers.
It's already here, so there's nothing, because we have like a new place opening up soon, right? The over 60 one, the one on Alcatraz. I'm just curious as to how that's going to affect this budget. And then, a couple of things I wanted to go into the record, since the meetings weren't recorded. One was which Albany mental, Albany doesn't contribute to the mental health budget, so I want to make sure that we get, instead of whatever we allocate from the general fund, that we at least make the request to the City of Albany to contribute something. And then also, cross-training for, I know you said it was, sometimes it was a meet-and-confer with the union, but however, when that's possible, if we can implement cross-training, that doesn't have to require going to the, wherever possible. And then also, so, I get, because I remember from this last year, we talked about the short-term rentals, and we named a couple of these organizations that are doing this, and I'm surprised to hear that we haven't had a contract with these people yet, and so we haven't, we're not collecting the revenues. So, how long does that take? It's been a year. Like, how long is that going to take?
Well, it took us about two years to negotiate a deal with Airbnb, so, one of the things that, that is going on now is, some of these people that are already self-certifying and paying, but the, the company itself just wants to talk to us about the people that they want to pay on their behalf. Some people are actually going to the city and actually paying this, without being at Airbnb, or without being, this other one, Hosewell. So what they're saying is, there are some people that we know, that they know, that they think they should bring it online with us, and so we're looking at the agreement. I don't know how long it would take, but it depends on attorneys and stuff, terms, legal stuff and all that. So, once we look at it, we look at the original draft, then we send it to the city attorney to look at it and see.
So you're doing this like on an individual basis? Why can't you do like more than one company at one time? I'm curious.
No, no, no.
I mean, because it's all the same, I mean, I'd imagine they're similar.
It's, it's.
These are, these are complicated agreements, and they have considerable legal implications that our city attorney, their finance director, my office, we need to review, and we have not had the opportunity to really sit down and engage fully with these vendors. But, we do have an enforcement arm with our short-term rental, where we are looking at individual short-term rentals, and making sure that we move into a compliance mode with those folks. But as we move forward, we will work on that, but right now, it isn't one of our major strategic initiatives and/or projects for the finance department, it's not at the highest level right now for us. But we will consider to figure out how we can work with these vendors to, to get that done.
Yeah, because that's revenue lost each time that we, you know, I'm just saying. And then, I guess the last thing that I wanted to state was that, I'm not sure, I mean, we had a whole list of things in the budget finance that we wanted to see presented. I'm not sure if everything on that list was presented, and I don't have the list, but it doesn't seem like everything was, all the requests that we made were honored. So I'd like to, for you all to look at that list, because I didn't write it all down, but I know it was like a long list, and let us know, and make sure that it's done the next time we meet about this. And then also, I just have to state that, which I know I requested, climate emergency. It's part of the bond issue, should be part of our everyday, all-the-time conversations about budget, everything, because here we are, it's happening, it's here, and I don't think we're addressing it to the full extent of which we should be addressing it. And I'll end with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Harrison.
Yeah, I wanted to just sort of put a plea in for moving that up the list with short-term rentals, because it is not just a loss of revenue, it's a loss of housing, and it's an important piece of our strategy, to make sure we maintain our housing stock. But my specific question I forgot to ask before is on page eight, Slide 8, sorry, is, again, as I've asked in the past, these expenditures, $191.2 and $194.9 million in expenditures for '20, projected for '20 and '21, assume that all positions are filled. Is that correct? It assumes no salary savings rate?
It does assume some salary savings, or assumes a vacancy rate. I think it's 2%. Is it 2%? It's 3% for miscellaneous, for sure.
Yeah, and, and we know that that's not reflective of where we've been. So, all I want to say in saying this is not that we don't have long-term financial needs, but I think this picture is presented on Slide 8 is over-conservative about what's available, because we actually are seeing an 8% vacancy rate. And some of those things will be filled by the city manager making requests, bringing forth things within the $13 million, but we don't have $3 million. We also have that gap, there are positions that haven't been filled, that may not be filled, and that money is available to do something else with. So I just want to set that context for everybody, to not think 3 is the number.
Well, I, I do need to just kind of respond to your comments, that even though there will be excess dollars from, from position savings, we do not know what our overtime, overtime costs will be for departments, and we try to generally cover those costs with position savings. So, if you recall, last year, a couple of years prior, we had massive demonstrations in Berkeley, those overtime, those overtime costs were sky-high. We had to use, to cover. So, while it may appear that there's money, we can't really, I can't really say that it's super-conservative, because there are unknowns. And there are unknowns that I want us to be prepared to actually fund and cover.
Right.
So I just want to be clear that there are more, it's more than just having a pot of money that's going to sit there, that money could also be used to cover other things.
Sure. Yeah, I think what would be really, really helpful is to know the dollar amount you're assuming, what the 3% equals in terms of dollars. If you could just let us know that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Councilwoman Davila, again.
Yeah, so the other thing that I mentioned at the budget, which was, so, if we have a cost savings, we're limited to $10,000, and the city's not, so I was curious as to if you could answer why that is.
You mean, carryover? Oh, so, the council, if you have savings at the end of the year, you can carry over up to $10,000, and carryover will make it available to you. The budget in departments are much greater than your office budget, and oftentimes, what they're carrying over is tied to commitments they've made, they just weren't able to pay it in the previous fiscal year, and so they're rolling, asking that that money be rolled It could be tied to new requests, so like, if we have a vacancy and work actually needs to be performed, the departments will ask if they can contract out for services to make sure that that work is actually performed. So those things are encumbered as well. It's just the magnitude of the dollars.
But.
But the dollars come back to, what isn't carried over is included in excess.
Correct.
And comes back to this council for, for determination on how to spend the funds or how to save the funds.
Yes.
That comes back to all of you. Those monies do not stay in departmental budgets unless they're, they are designated to a specific expenditure, and then those dollars return.
So, I'm curious, well, that doesn't answer the question, why we're limited to $10,000, but I also.
Council policy.
Okay. That was the answer I was looking for. Nobody said that before. Thank you. But, so why, how was, or, yeah, the auditor able to give, I think it was like 250,000 to Irma? So how does that happen then?
It was a recommendation for which I accepted and the council accepted.
Yeah, but how does it get to be $250,000 is my question?
So, position savings, vacancies, and also some things that aren't spent in the budget. It could have been supplies, it could have been a variety of things. Could have been contract costs that weren't needed. It could have been a variety of things that are within her budget that she then wanted to apply to the funding of Irma.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So in closing, I just want to remind the council, the buck stops with us. And that, our staff have done a really incredible job in sort of assessing the needs for the departments over the next two fiscal years and proposing budgets for their respective departments and, and new position ads and new programs. And we're going to evaluate all these different requests in the coming weeks. And at the end of the day, these decisions are made by the city council. So with respect to the auditors, the prior auditors' proposal to add salary savings to fund the implementation of the Irma program, that, that was a recommendation to us and we approved it. City managers' recommendations are recommendations to us and we will certainly consider them and may approve them in whole or modify them or approve some of them or approve some of ours. One thing I wanted to just highlight is just making sure that of that 3 million that we have available to allocate now in June, obviously, there might be some fungibility to identify additional revenues or things be deferred in November. Just to make sure, Madam City Manager, that there is some capacity to consider council referrals in that. And I know that's hard, but there are the department requests that you are going to be recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee to us beyond the two things that you discussed this evening. And then there is about $3 million in council referrals. And we're going to have to discuss all this and we're going to have to prioritize, but just so there's some fungibility so that, you know, if the council decides that there is some, few things that we want to fund now or we need to fund now, because they're really high priority initiatives, maybe transportation or something related to pedestrian safety, maybe some other pressing priority, that there's some capacity built in for that. So I just wanted to raise that for your consideration as we are, you know, discussing how we're going to allocate this 2 million, this 3 million dollars.
Okay, thank you. And, and I, I just want to be clear that the majority of the requests that are coming to me as a city manager that have been recommended, most of them are addressing priorities that council.
Council priorities.
Absolutely, already. And these are ongoing needs, most of them. We will highlight those that are specific.
Okay.
And then we'll highlight those that are needed. So I'm, I'm looking at, very critically, at what is needed.
Yes.
To perform. And so I'll be presenting those to council. And I think the good part here, though, is that over time, we'll be able, if there's something that you want considered, say in June, on June 11, as we've done before, we go back.
Dialogue, yeah.
Dialogue, work through it and figure out how to fund what you all need and maybe how to defer what we need as well.
So one thing I would, I mean, I don't want to add more work to your already significant workload, but just something to consider as we're presenting this information to the city council is with respect to those programs that we are, you're proposing that align with a council referral, council priority, just kind of linking it.
Absolutely.
And to the strategic plan. I'm sure you're already going to do that, but that would just be helpful for us to understand the alignment between the strategic plan, the council referrals that the particular funding proposal is implementing. So we just have some context, that would be extremely helpful.
Will do, thank you.
And then just in closing, I just want to say that the, the revenue projections that staff provides are, are very conservative in what we have seen, but I think on your best judgment based on trends that you have seen in the, in the past few years. But we do know in the case of transfer tax, it is a very volatile revenue source, dependent on, you know, real estate market conditions. But certainly in the last three, four years, we've seen significant growth. And I don't think there's anything to suggest that we won't see significant growth this, this upcoming fiscal year. With respect to the cannabis, part of the issue is that some of these retail operations were not in, in operation up until recently. So I think we're going to see more revenues coming in. And I think the estimate was, if I'm not mistaken, Henry, was we, we had assumed double the amount of basically what we're getting for the medicinal from recreational. Because it is, there's probably going to be just a lot more purchasing, so.
That was the assumption. But, but the state is even saying they're bringing down their projections because the projections, they're not meeting the projections.
So the state is, they're saying they're downward.
They're downward, the projections because of black market rate. I think probably that was one of the reasons why the taxes are going down. The governor is about to lower the taxes for the excise tax because it's way too much, 22%. So they think of bringing it down as well.
Interesting.
Right.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank, in closing, our city manager. You know, I've been on the council for 11 years and I've been, I've worked with three different city managers and been part of budgets in the last 11 years. And I think just in the last two or three years, seeing your commitment to transparency, to the public, to the council, providing information so that we can make informed decisions, and your commitment to working with us in partnership is so deeply appreciated. And I know that the driving force behind that is Teresa and I just want to really express my gratitude for all your work and this, and all the department heads. And we'll continue the discussion. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn special meeting? Moved by Councilwoman Davila, second of a vice mayor, Wayne Graff. Is there any objection to adjournment? Okay, hearing no objection, we adjourn. Thank you.